Good evening, everyone. We want to welcome everyone to today's meeting, regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council, and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry is absent at this time, but is expected to join us shortly. Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Here.
Mayor Budge?
Here. Thank you. Do you want to read the -- well, actually, we want to welcome everyone who is here tonight, but we also want to welcome those who will be watching us on cable or the Internet. And we'll ask Stacy to read the playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrokable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, November 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, November 10th at noon on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. And we want to remind everybody, of course, that there is opportunity for public comment in a few minutes, and let you all know that we have a speaker card in the back of the room. We already have several people signed up. And if you will please fill out a speaker card, then we'll have -- we'll be able to get back to you with information or answers or whatever. So, we're still going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Patrick Larkin, who is Administrator, General Manager of the Park District. And our invocation will be brought to us by Chaplain Michael Guerin from the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, and we'll invite you to stay standing for that.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you, Patrick. Chaplain?
Good evening. Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious Creator, in recognition of the coming Veterans Day holiday, we thank you for those who have lived and worked to bring us to this present age. We acknowledge our debt to those of our nation who've given their lives for their country, for freedom, for justice, and liberty. May we never forget the value of their sacrifice and comfort those who grieve and bless the memories of those who died in the pursuit of freedom. We also pray that as a nation, we spare no effort to secure the release of any American prisoner, the repatriation of remains of those who died bravely in defense of liberty, and a full accounting of all those who are missing. We honor all veterans and their families in your name. We thank you as we thank them for their sacrifice. We ask you to return to them the favor of your blessing, and we ask that you give our veterans and their families peace beyond the peace they fought to secure, a peace in their own hearts wrapped in the joy of life. Lastly, we pray this evening for wisdom and guidance as the city council conducts its business. We ask for your blessing on all of those gathered here this evening and those who reside in our city. In a spirit of gratefulness, we pray this evening. Amen.
Thank you very much. So, we always have presentations at the beginning of our meeting, and tonight, we enter the season of Community Enhancement Fund Grant Check Presentations. So, I think we're going to turn it over to Stacy Delaney.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and guests. I'm Stacy Delaney, and I'm the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. This evening, we are presenting ceremonial checks to several of the organizations that were approved for funding through the Community Enhancement Fund in fiscal year 1819. These projects and programs support local Rancho Cordova priorities, including education, entertainment and sports, civic engagement, and quality of life, while continuing to make our city a safe and inviting place to live, work, and have fun. Mayor and councilmembers, please come down and join these groups as they receive their The first check being presented this evening is for the Rancho Cordova Police Activities League to enhance the 2018 annual PAL holiday run. This is the fifth year of the run, which fosters community partnerships and community pride, and provides and collects toys for children in the community. PAL's mission is to involve and mentor community youth in social, educational, recreational, and leadership activities, which deter crime, increase self-esteem, and promote a positive relationship with law enforcement. This year's run is taking place on Saturday, December 8th, and features a 5K, 10K, and a 1.2-mile walk. PAL Director Officer De La Cruz and members of Rancho Cordova PAL are accepting the check for $10,000. The second check this evening is for the Rancho Cordova Homeless Assistance Resource Team, known as HART. HART is a group of congregations, businesses, and individuals who care about those in Rancho Cordova who are currently without a home. The funding provides ongoing services to the homeless in Rancho Cordova by continuing to host and organize winter shelter services and assistance to the homeless in Rancho Cordova. HART Board Member Becky Budge is accepting the check for $13,000. The third check is for the Sierra Service Project for the purpose of coordinating volunteers and reaching out to residents to make small-scale home repairs and improvements such as wheelchair ramps, fences, stairs, porches, exterior painting, and yard cleanup projects for Rancho Cordova homeowners. The projects enhance the visual appeal of homes and neighborhoods and improve residential safety. Executive Director Megan Walsh and Rancho Cordova Program Manager McKenna Colbertson are accepting the check for $35,650. The fourth check this evening is for the Whisker Warrior Animal Defense Fund for spay and neuter services, flea prevention, vaccines, and other incidental and necessary veterinarian care for dogs, cats, and domesticated rabbits of residents in Rancho Cordova. These services benefit the city of Rancho Cordova and its residents by reducing pet overpopulation, caring for abandoned cats, and preventing disease in the local pet population. Executive Director Tara Colvin-Bach, Treasurer Gail Gifford, Director Debbie Jernigan, Board Member Sharla McKenna, Director Jeannie Boss, and Volunteer Tally Miller are accepting the check for $41,861. And the fifth and final check this evening is for 916, Inc. to provide creative writing workshops to Rancho Cordova students at Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School, AM when K through 8, Mills Middle School, George Washington Carver High School, and Walnutwood High School. Up to 120 local students will be transformed into confident writers and published authors through this process. The literary arts experience increases their literacy skills, improves vocabulary, teaches empathy, and expands communication skills. Executive Director Ian Hadley is accepting the check for $47,795.
And this concludes tonight's check presentation. I think we're always amazed at the tremendous variety of programs that are made possible because of the Community Enhancement Fund. So, we always want to thank the voters in Rancho Cordova for having approved it. I'm informed that the rest of the new school principals and assistant principals are not able to be here tonight, so I just want to make sure that nobody came at the last minute. Okay? So, then, Patrick Larkin, we'll turn it over to you for the presentation, the much-awaited presentation about the pool.
I have to excuse myself at this time?
Yes, please. Thank you, Garrett.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, Vice Mayor McGarvey, councilmembers, and City Manager Abhar. Thank you for the opportunity for us to come to you this evening to give you an update on the Cordova Community Pool Project. We want to thank you again for your support on bringing this community asset back to our community. I want to have a special thank you out to Elizabeth Sparkman and Megan Siren, who have been a part of our team in the project so far, and they have been a great asset to the development of the design as well as the plan going forward. With that, I would like to introduce you to our LPA consultant, who will be walking us through tonight's presentation, Arash Azadi. And with him also is Dennis Berkshire, who is from Aquatic Design Group. And with that, they'll walk us through our presentation this evening, and it will be available for questions afterwards.
Well, thank you very much. And again, thank you for allowing us to be here a second time to share the update and progress we've made on the project. We have had a bunch of exciting meetings, and as I mentioned to Patrick tonight, it's really, it's really building momentum and getting to a really exciting point. Just a quick recap, going back through the process here. We started in fall of 2017. We've done some initial conceptual work. We have gone to the community twice. We have been in front of you once, and we have been in front of the CRPD Board once, sharing sort of the development and progress along the way. Today, we're obviously at the city council meeting, and this follows the community workshop that we had just a couple weeks ago. Just as a quick reminder of where we're at, or where we were at, this was the existing facility, and that red line sort of defines the rough limits of the overall project. There we go. The initial concept, if you remember, included a single pool, which was eight lanes, six deep-water lanes, and a diving component. Had an, had a new building that would support the pool operations and restrooms and those kinds of things, decking, and entry amenities, and general landscape, and those kinds of features. A limited project, and that red line defined roughly the limits of that, of that project. So, back in February, we went to the community and shared that plan that you, or a more conceptual version of that plan, to really garner feedback and understand what the community was specifically looking for, their comments, their ideas and thoughts. They came back with a series of things. I can certainly go through each one if you'd like me to, but for the sake of not belaboring this, essentially, they wanted a more substantial project. Instead of six deep-water lanes, they were looking at something that could accommodate a more thorough program. So, they asked for 10 lanes of total, eight deep-water lanes. They wanted to make sure that there was recreation component, both in addition to the competitive aspect of the project, so they wanted us to not forget about that. There were some minor comments about things like bike access and storage, looking at zero entry for the pool to allow equal access and adequate access for everybody. So, in a sense, they wanted to make sure it met the competitive needs and also met the recreational needs of the community. Those were the, sort of, the takeaway from the project. So, we did a lot of work. There was a lot of things that contributed to the project, which we'll go into. But we went back to the community a few weeks ago and shared an update. And as part of that, we shared the expanded program that was a result of the additional funding that the city provided. And we had a fabulous meeting. We really walked away, just as a professional, I walked away from the meeting very excited and said, "I wish every meeting would go that well," frankly. There was a, really, the questions had to do more with programmatic uses, and how are you going to operate this and that, getting, getting a sense of the operations, some basic questions of where would emergency vehicle access come into the project? Will there be a concession stands, or how is the food going to be handled? Will there be food allowed into facility and things along that? Asking, where would the seating components be? Is there shading for the seating? Those kinds of questions, very general questions, really more programmatic and not about what, not so much about what we were building, because I think everyone was fairly pleased with essentially what they saw. So, going back to the, the additional funding, so, we presented the project, there was a finite budget, and we came back with several options. The city graciously enhanced the funding for the project through donation of $3.4 million. And as part of that, when we came to the city council meeting, we shared options as to what we could do with that additional funding, how we could grow the project and meet the various needs. Obviously, your needs are always more than your funding, so we wanted to present options and, and get feedback on that. So, one of the thoughts was to add two additional lanes to go from an eight-lane total to 10-lanes total, six deep-water to eight deep-water, looking at a second recreational pool, and then looking at different levels of lighting, security lighting, competition lighting, and so on. So, those were three of the main or larger components that we talked about. Then there was smaller pieces like the shade canopies, looking at overflow areas where they could do, provide breakout spaces for when there was meets and competitions and things like that, some additional shaded seating, some covered entry area. We looked at those existing buildings. Can we convert those to provide some storage and make them useful from a programmatic standpoint? Looking at sustainability features such as the photovoltaic panels and other sustainable features. And then, again, shade was a common theme, so looking at things like cabanas and, and some of those additional shade opportunities. So, what was, the feedback that we received from city council and CRPD Board was to look at the expanded pool. That was something that was unanimously agreed would be a benefit to the project. It allows for a more enhanced program from a competitive need standpoint, so two additional, two shallow lanes, eight deep-water lanes, 10 lanes total. I keep saying that because it's a very important component of the pool. The second was to add the recreational pool, and then enhance the play features a little bit, make sure that they provided adequate play components there. And then, looking at some level of lighting. So, we're providing security lighting, and then we're providing the infrastructure for the competition lighting. So, it's something that you don't have to tear down the whole facility to add some competitive lights later on. So, this leads us to the really, really exciting part. So, you look at the fabulous image there, how can you not get excited with that? So, the, you can see in the middle, the lap pool, the secondary recreational pool. You can see that the deck area has grown substantially to accommodate that additional program. The building itself has grown by roughly about, I think, 600 square feet or so to accommodate the increased pumps and filters and all those things that go with the second pool, the additional fixtures for the restrooms that are code required. So, all of those pieces, the building, support building. Looking at the top of your screen is the service drive. That's where the emergency access and service access and all of those things come in, and it's completely separate from all other access points here, so there isn't that conflict between the pedestrian and emergency and service accesses. We're looking at the far left of this screen is the, is the main entry of the project. That was something that the community came back when was very appreciative of and was very in support of, getting, moving away from the existing entry of the facility that, being the first time I went there, you couldn't find, and you had to really go and search for it to get there. So, now it's incorporated and utilizing the, the whole entrance that was there with all the ADA access and the fountains and all the landscaping and everything, so that whole entry element. Looking at some seating areas as well, and then that secondary entrance for large events. So, if there is a large event where you're going to utilize both parking lots, and you've got a lot of people coming in, and those events are staffed differently, so having that secondary entrance that allows for, to be opened on larger events. Looking specifically at the added components, we talked about the larger building with the additional 600 square feet, the two additional lanes in the, in the pool, and the additional recreational pool, and then also the enhanced play feature. We showed you several different options on that, from very minor to something a little bit more robust, and we've got the additional play features. Those were what were approved, and that's what's been incorporated in the design development And then, looking at the building itself, just to give you a quick little snapshot of it, the gray areas are all the service areas, so the pool equipment, mechanicals, all those things. The green areas are sort of the public areas where the changing rooms and the restrooms, locker rooms, you can see separate men's and women's, these are fully enclosed, so they're no longer open to the air, anything like that. And then, we have the two family changing areas as well. So, those are two family rooms that can be utilized outside of the women and men's locker areas. And then, the blue on your screen is the service side of things. So, that's where the lifeguard room is, the ticket doors, all of those things. So, if I were to orient you to the site, to the right side of your screen would be where everyone enters the project. You walk up, you, there's the ticket windows right there, the gates in front of you, enter the project. The corner of the building is all glass to allow lifeguards to have full access and view to the entire pool deck. And then, the restrooms and changing rooms are all directly serviceable right off of the pool deck. On the far left, you see the series of doors. Those are where the service access and chlorine deliveries and all of those things would come into the building. Giving you a quick snapshot of the building, the far upper-left one is that service area. Those are the doors that allow the chemical access and all those things. The one to the upper-right is the project entry, so as you enter, those three windows that you see there, those are the ticket windows, and you're catching the glimpse of that corner of the project, which would be the glass that allows that access into the site. And then, the larger image that you're seeing at the bottom of your screen is what you would see if you were standing in the pool, looking back at the building. So, I'll turn it over there to get a little bit more into detail on the pool.
Thank you. Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all again, and we're excited about this project and how it's been able to develop. You know, when we started this project, we had a lot of community output. One of the things that we noted early on is the fact that while we have a lot of swim teams and, and organized swim members, we also know that by the U.S. Sporting Goods Association, they tell us we can expect over 15% of the, the public here in Rancho Cordova area to participate in municipal swimming. And when we look at that, that population, we know that the organized swimmers represent less than 1%. So, the idea of being able to represent the silent majority, the, the people that aren't motivated to stand here and tell you what they need for their swim meets or water polo matches, was really important to make sure we could balance this, this project. So, when we start with the swimming pool, as you see in the image here, we have eight lanes that are in deep water. That means water that's at least seven feet deep or deeper, so that the water's deep enough for racing platform dives into the pool. It's also deep enough to support water polo. So, this pool not only meets but exceeds CIF requirements, high school, National Federation of State high school requirements for both swim meets and water polo matches or fields of play. In a, in a high school swim meet, we know we need at least six lanes for a dual meet, but by having eight lanes, this allows us to have more regional-type meets if we want to hold them there, and then the two shallow lanes would serve as warm-up cooldown lanes for us. So, we have the, the lanes that are all 25 yards in length. As you see to the far right, we've also identified, though, the programs that's going to serve the rest of the community as well. So, when we talk not only about the competitive groups, swim meets, water polo, synchronized swimming, we also get into lap swimming, rec swimming, rec sports that we can bring in here, from kayaking to battleship to a stand-up paddleboard yoga, all kinds of programs that we can bring in that would allow the community really to interact with this type of a pool.
That sounds odd.
Then, we looked at the, the activity pool, and in this activity pool, it features a beach-type entry, so zero-depth entry. It's got interactive play. We're currently working with staff on coming up with theming and how that's going to look for the, the children to interact with that, but at your direction, we've beefed that up so that we've got more recreation value that comes into this pool. In addition, though, we also have the truncated lap area that can serve for somebody that wants to do recreational lap swim or aqua fitness types of classes, learn-to-swim programs, all of those. And again, to the far right, you can see a list of some of the programs we've identified that this pool will serve for us as we move forward. And here's a little, a larger detail of that, that rec pool. Part of what we've been doing is to take the interactive play and keep that to a zone that you see off to the right, so we have a little more quiescent area where young children that are perhaps just learning to, you know, be in water, everything's not sprays and all of that, so that we can account for them as well in this space. And by the way, I failed to mention before, both the lap pool has both a ADA lift as well as a secondary means of ADA access, as does this pool that has the ADA lift, it has the beach-type entry, and it has a secondary handrail. So, this actually has three different ADA-accessible means into this pool. Looking at some of the things that we've talked with staff, looking at types of interactive play features that we might consider. These are features like you see the spill mix where children can come in and interact. They can manipulate the water so they can affect what that recreation feature's going to be. The same thing with the fun guy. We get into the stuff that's going to be a little bit more sedate so that smaller children aren't going to be afraid of it. And there, you can see some of the just water-only features, dumping buckets where they're trying to predict when that's going to come in, and even looking at some of the thematic opportunities that we have with these interactive play features. So, this is all part of what we're working through right now to develop exactly what that's going to be in that activity pool.
I like the ducks.
You like the ducks?
Can I ask you a quick question about those?
Sure.
I know, and somebody from the park district can correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to say White Rocks Park, when they took the pool out and they put a spray feature in, it was so big that there has to be lifeguards on duty?
Yes.
Are we gonna, I guess there's going to be lifeguards on duty for other parts of it, but for this, operationally, i- is this able to operate without that additional staffing cost? Or, or have we not even gotten to that point?
What we have, and staff has directed us, that they didn't want anything large. If we have a water slide, for example, that falls under the jurisdiction of DASH as an amusement ride.
Okay.
It requires additional staffing, and we've been directed that that is not what we are going to have here.
Okay, great.
A slide is a ride?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you.
So, with that, I'll turn it back to Arash for next steps.
So, next steps is actually even the funner part, and, and quite easy. We're gonna, with the, with the approvals, we go into documentation. This is where the design parts are generally wrapping up and were pencils-to-paper, if that's a literal term anymore, but pencils-to-paper, drawing away and creating the construction documents for the bid process. Then, we estimate groundbreaking to happen in fall of 2019 with an estimated grand opening of spring of 2021. And with that, I'm going to say thank you and turn it over to you for questions.
Okay. Questions for the architects? Okay, David?
I've heard some concerns about the pool size from school district sources, and I refer those actually to Cyrus. Cyrus, do you have anything to report to us on, on that inquiry?
Yes, I received an inquiry, and I've been in discussions with both Mr. Berkshire and Mr. Larkin. And I think most of the information that Mr. Berkshire provided today addressed those questions. I think it had to do with whether these, the pool, the large pool could be used for competitive purposes and also water polo. So, so the, the specific comments were related to the size of the pool, that whether it has to be for, especially for water polo, for floating goals, that, that whether this is adequate, this pool design is adequate. polo, for floating goals, that, that whether this is adequate, this pool design is adequate for that, that size. So Dennis, if you don't mind, maybe just provide some specifics related to those comments and the questions that we've heard from the school district sources.
Yes, thank you. So CIF, or the National Federation of State High Schools, for a competitive swim, we need to have a swim course that's a, is 75 feet in length, lanes that are not, that are not less than seven feet in width, and we require a pool that's a minimum six lanes, so 75 by 45. We exceed that. And again, as I pointed out before, by getting to the eight competition lanes that are deep water, we actually can host larger meets than just a meet between two high schools. From a water polo standpoint, water polo for CIF needs to have a field of play that's a minimum 75 feet long and a minimum 45 feet wide, to a maximum 25 meters long and 20 meters wide, or anywhere in between. And so in this case, we have a field of play that's going to be the 75, and because of the eight lanes, we're almost 59 feet in width. So again, we exceed that 75 by 45, a water polo field of play. Now, we can put floating goals into the, the 75-foot length of that pool if we choose. The face of goals are then going to be like 72 instead of 75 face of goals, or we can choose the fixed wall-mounted goals, which is the other standard for pools this size. So again, it meets or exceeds all of the CIF high school standards. The only thing it does not serve is if we wanted to get into USA water polo that would go out to a 25-meter or up to a 30-meter floating water polo, which is something that we would see at UC Davis or, or Sacramento State or places like that.
So how, how do we stand competitively with this pool configuration? Because I heard you say we basically hit the minimums, but I'm wondering, I mean, are we surrounded by facilities serving high schools that are exceeding these minimums?
You know, it, from the high school level, no. In fact, a lot of high schools in this area are still playing in pools that are 75 by 45, and in some cases, deep at one end and shallow at the other. There are some exceptions. If we go out to, to Lemby Park, where they've got a 50-meter Olympic-sized pool, you would have the ability to play in a longer water polo field of play. Or over to Roseville, where they have an Olympic-sized pool, they would have the ability to do that. But within the area here of the actual high schools, no, a lot of them are playing in a 75 by 45 or 75 by 50. So our water polo field of play is, is right on par with those.
Natomas is building a larger one, Elk Grove's building a larger one, as I understand it, both Olympic-sized.
Yes, Elk Grove is a 52-meter with a movable bulkhead. North Natomas, we're working on that one right now as well, and that's 50 to 52 meters predicted as well.
And like Vista de Lago High School, what is their configuration compared to this one?
You know, I have to apologize, I don't remember off the top of my head what their, their.
Or Rosemont?
Rosemont's, yeah, yeah. It, it might be a 25-meter, 25-yard pool, where we're 25-yard by 25-yard. That means the water polo field of play, though, is the exact same. What?
So the feedback I got from the school district was, this would be a good practice pool, could not be a competitive pool, could not host a meet pool, could not host water polo, polo, could not do diving, was their feedback.
Yeah, it's not, not completely accurate. What does happen is we take the diving that we've got within our deep competitive lane, so a swim meet becomes longer, where we say for the diving event in a high school swim meet, we stop, take the lanes out, they do the diving, they come back and put the lanes in, and we continue the meet. Where if you had a, an Olympic-sized pool, you would have the ability to just dedicate lanes to diving and still have your six, your eight or 10 lanes for a swim meet, for example. But in terms of meeting CIF and high schools participating in events like this, it meets all of the high school requirements.
So just ballpark figure, what does an Olympic-sized pool cost?
Um.
For example, Patrick, you know, if we're going to add one next to this.
Yeah, so.
I don't know if you have any sort of plan like that, or if the site can accommodate, but if we were, what sort of ballpark?
Yeah, so first, first of all, an Olympic-sized pool, the pool itself is about $2.5 million for the pool, not counting bathrooms, decks, everything to support it. So generally, if we look at a 50-meter pool complex, we would say it's somewhere in the $7.5 to $12 million range with everything built out. Just as importantly, though, for us, is to keep in mind, though, that when we look at the operating expense for these pools, it's predicated on surface area of water, water evaporation, the heat loss that we have with the pool that's all surface-related, the chemical use of the pool, all of those things are, are predicated on the surface area of water. So when we take a pool and say, we're going to put in a 50-meter here in the Sacramento area, I would tell you the annual utilities to operate that pool can be somewhere around 300,000-plus to operate it. If we cut that pool in half to a 25-meter, we've cut those annual utility expenses in half. So part of it that we have to be good stewards is to look at it and say, can we afford an extra 150 or $200,000 per year in utilities for the next 20 years? And that's whether this is a high school, whether this is a, a city, a community pool as well. So it's, it's not just what's it cost us to build, but what's it going to cost us to operate. We're currently working on a, on a new pool right now for Roseville for Granite Bay High School, and in their case, they're looking at a pool right now at 33 meters by 25 yards, for example. Now that's the pool that can get them into a floating water polo, but it's still just a 25-yard course in what they're doing.
You keep switching between feet and yards and meters and whatnot, and some of us are not quite sure what you're talking about, so could we use one?
Well, that's job security for me.
Could we have one definition of what size these things are?
Well, what happens is that, yes, ma'am, the, the aquatics always works off of the Olympics, which is meters, and a meter is 3.28 feet. So if we look at a pool and say it's going to be set up for international competition, then we would say it runs 25 meters, 82 feet long. In the U.S., we're going to use 25 yards, 75 feet long, for the same type of competition. But yes, and, and as an industry, we've done very well at trying to keep everybody confused by jumping from meters to yards to feet to inches. My seventh-grade math teacher with common denominators would, would have a fit with this.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My seventh-grade math teacher was much older than yours was.
Just one question about, it seems like what we've been talking about, then it gives the, when it's finished, you'll have the size of pool you need, so the kids can practice, can actually prepare themselves for the kind of competition that they're going, looking at, and even for Olympic, that kind of thing. But the, this pool will be available, and they can use that pool to build up the strength they need and all that sort of thing, correct?
That is correct. And, and again, this pool not only is a practice pool, but this, the, both the, the swim lanes and the water polo field of play are compliant to host meets and matches there, so that they can compete in their various leagues.
I think the important question is, to, to answer the question, does this pool meet CIF criteria for competition?
Right.
And the answer to that is yes, it does for both swim meets and for water polo. Now, there are preferences that go beyond those, right? And everyone always would like a bigger pool, because you can do certain things on a bigger pool. The more water you have, the more you can do. So from a preference standpoint, can the pool get better, bigger? Yes, it can. From a program standpoint, does it meet CIF requirements for swim meets, and does it meet CIF requirements for water polo? Yes, it does.
Very good, thanks.
Sure.
Anything else, David?
Oh, I'm, I'm curious in the case of Natomas or Elk Grove, you know, are you familiar enough with those projects? Now, have they done some sort of economic analysis to determine, you know, on the tourism front, or bringing outside tournaments in, what sort of revenue might be available? Because we're one of those, unlike Elk Grove, actually, we have a hotel base here. So we are kind of ready to go for those sorts of athletic competitions in ways that other areas aren't. I don't think Natomas necessarily has that advantage either. But I'm curious about whether or not those projects are relying on some sort of revenue.
They, they are relying on revenue, and I'm working on both of those projects. Elk Grove, bless you, Elk Grove is almost completed in construction. In the, North Natomas, we're halfway through the design phase of that. What, what I can tell you is that while we can look at some of the issues of bedroom tax revenue and some of those things by saying we're going to have swim meets, you know, the real fact of the matter is when we build an aquatic center, if we do a 50-meter pool, we take Limby Park, for example, and Folsom, you know, they will tell you that, and the original economic model showed that by building it as a 50-meter pool, they would need to subsidize the operations of that aquatic facility in the tune of about $500,000 to $600,000 per year. And, and the fact is that the, what the swim teams can afford to pay when it comes to renting lanes isn't anywhere near what it costs to operate the facility. So what it really becomes is a community saying, we're going to provide these levels of service, and we want to provide this Olympic pool, and we're willing to commit out of public funds, a little over a half a million dollars a year to be able to provide those services.
Do you know, do you happen to know, Cyrus, is that something Folsom is still doing? I mean, that, I've been to that pool complex several times for parties, and it seems incredibly busy. Is that something the city is still subsidizing?
Yes, I, to my knowledge, they, they are subsidizing. And the point I wanted to make, the pool, I'm very familiar with the pool that's being constructed in Elk Grove, and this is a, an aquatic complex that was designed some 15 years ago as part of the new growth area. In fact, the city was, started collecting developer impact fees for the construction of this pool. So this is not unlike what we are planning to do for Rio del Oro. We have a 110-acre park site in Rio del Oro, and as part of it, we, we believe that there is going to be an aquatic center at that location, and we are, we, we, we have programmed developer impact fees for that pool project. So the large aquatic complex that we're thinking about building in Rancho Cordova, most likely will be in that footprint. You need a large park site. And I don't think, I think we've always, we had always viewed Hagan as more of a community complex, as opposed to the large aquatic complex for the region. So, so that's, it's still a very, very nice pool that's being designed and built for that, for the community.
It strikes me that unfortunately, as much as we don't like to have to admit it, anyway, you look at it, Hagan Park is at the end of a dead end with limited parking. And so when, you know, it's the same problem we have with the Fourth of July, or, or when Saul Bourne is doing something and, but the school is doing something at the same time. You know, everybody over there is competing for road access and for parking spaces, and we just need a location like Rio del Oro that has access from a variety of different directions.
They'll have access, yeah.
In order to, in order to host a larger complex, a larger, more competitive or more professional kind of a complex.
Well, and I think the, another thing to kind of think about is, if, if we build a facility here that needs to generate X amount of revenue to cover, we're going to end up in a case like we have with Mather right now with the baseball fields, where they're being used a lot, just not by people that live here.
Right, because of that cost of the rental that you mentioned.
Right, so if we, and I hate to use this word, if you over-improve it to the point where everyone in the region wants to use it, there's a lot of people that don't live here that can pay a lot more. And so if, if, we should be careful with it, but I will say that of the new facilities that I am familiar with, Rosemont being one, th- this is comparable, if not superior, to what they have. So I, I hear you, David, but yeah, I think, I think there is a more appropriate place for, I think, the facility that you're talking about. And putting it over by Rio puts it much more, with greater access, not only from a transportation standpoint, but to our hotels.
Right, right. So I had a couple of questions, but they're more site plan kinds of questions. You all had the, the initial site plan up for a while, and that new entry for emergency access and service access, does that take, take away that funky concrete stage that's always been out there? Is that where that is?
There's a little basketball court piece there.
Yeah, with a funny little concrete stage.
Yeah, it does impact that, yes.
Okay, because we have terrain, we have elevation differences out there, you know, from the underwater viewing hole in the ground, which I assume gets filled in to, you know, to, you go to the top of the hill where the pools are, and then you go down to the basketball court and down to the lagoon, and it really is sort of sitting on top of a hill. And in terms of ADA accessibility, when this first came up in pools, there was a lot of publicity about chair lifts and their use in, you know, apartment complexes or home or public pools or whatever. So is that still the state of technology, or is there something more elegant than that solution?
Well, for the rec pool, for instance, the secondary pool, we have the zero-deep entry. So that becomes a very easy transition. I believe there's some issue, well, why don't you, I think you're better off here.
When we look at ADA accessibility into swimming pools, for years, we had met with user groups, and they came in saying, you know, what we really don't want to do is have to make a transfer from our chair to another device. So when we looked at chair lifts, we said, well, that's really probably not the most elegant solution that we could come up with. So coming up with ramps might be a better way to do it. But after a few years, what we found is ramps didn't solve our problem at all. In fact, it made it worse, in that people are not going to put their wheelchair into the swimming pool water. So now we're going to provide water wheelchairs, and they're going to have to make a transfer. And more importantly, the majority of the people cannot get themselves in and out unassisted, especially out trying to roll up with the resistance of water in the pool itself. So the, the lifts actually provided us with a better means. Now, what happens is that code says that if a pool is 300 perimeter feet or larger, we're required to have two means of ADA access. Primary access, every pool has to have that, that's either a ramp or a lift. And then secondary access is a transfer wall, transfer tier, or transfer stairs. So what we've done in the swimming pool is that even though we're just under that, at the 300 mark, we have stairs that have low risers and double handrails, that is an ADA-compliant secondary means of access. So someone that's just limited in mobility can use that without having to actually get into the chair, the lift itself.
Right.
And then, as Arash mentioned, then in the activity pool, we do have the beach entry ramp, we have that secondary stairs, the low risers, and we have a lift. So we've provided three different means for their access there.
Sure. I was just curious, because I know the park district is particularly, probably more so at this point than at any other point in their 60 years, is sensitive about accessibility, so.
Yeah. One of the other opportunities we have with the site was that in redoing the site compared to the old pools, the site's now leveled off. So we don't have all the stairs and the ups and downs getting around the pools that we have on the site.
Interesting.
The other thing we have done with the site is we're looking at fencing that would allow us to separate the competition and activity so that we could have simultaneous programs as well. So if we have a swim meet, but we still want to have birthday parties or other things, that activity pool could still do that, and it doesn't get shut down because of a swim meet or a water polo match or things like that.
Sounds good, sounds good. Any other questions? David?
Just a final point. You know, my questions were designed around, what's the best thing we can provide for our existing high school?
Sure.
What's the best thing we can provide for our existing community? Because the challenge we've got in Rancho Cordova is 80% of our residents, 80% of our citizens, live in the older part of town, that gets very few sort of new amenities. So the, you know, the, the large new pool that'll go next to the brand-new high school at some point in the future, that's in the, the smaller part of town. And, you know, the, the older side of town is always looking over there and saying, why are you giving them everything? So this is one of those opportunities we have to sort of do something for that older part of town where development is not financing, you know, the new facilities that we're seeing on the new side of town. So it's a constant tug, I would say, within our community. It's bound to get worse, I would say, or a stronger tug back and forth as we continue to grow, and we run the risk of sort of having this, this division between old and new. And so my constant intent is to be sure that the older part of Rancho Cordova is getting everything it possibly can out of this deal, wherein they sort of allow growth to happen within their, their jurisdiction. And so I'm always going to be here advocating for, you know, Cordova High School and those older neighborhoods that right now are about 80% of our population.
Sure. I mean, it makes perfect sense, and, you know, we recently can, completed a high school pool for Ensonal High School in Alameda, and it's actually a pool not quite as large as the one being proposed here. We also did one for Richmond High School, and again, that was a joint-city project. And again, it's 25 yards with the wall-mounted goals, very similar to the size that we're pool, we're doing here. So there are a lot of high schools within the state that look at this, and we're not trying to talk somebody out of a 50-meter Olympic-sized pool. trying to talk somebody out of a fifty meter Olympic sized pool. In fact, our founding partner, as Randy always liked to say, a fifty meter pool a week, that's all we ask. We're quite happy to design and draw, put pencil to paper for fifty meter pools, but it's not always the, the right answer for every application.
Or any variation in between. I mean, there's, uh, there's all sorts of variations between twenty-five meters.
We need you at the microphone.
Sorry. There's all sorts of variations between that twenty-five yard and a fifty meter. I mean, you can go to thirty, you can go to thirty-three, thirty-five, fifty, and we're doing one that's actually sixty-three meters now. So there's a lot of variations, you can go into that. And I mean, we'd be happy to make them larger, but this, the criteria here is can it meet those things? And, and absolutely.
Cyrus, you were going to have a conversation with the school district about participation in this project at some level? And there are unfunded elements of this project?
Yes, I did have actually a one-on-one meeting with the superintendent and, uh, request that if the s- school district has any funding available to, uh, put into the project specifically on some of the improvements that they needed to see or they, they wanted to see related to the high school sports. Uh, she, uh, did call me back on, uh, last Friday and, uh, and said that unfortunately they have depleted most of their bond funding, uh, on the girl softball and the other projects that they have on the construction, that they wouldn't, that they will not be able to provide or any funding or assist with the construction of the pool.
Okay, Stacy, do we have anybody else signed up to speak? Not on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Patrick, Laura, thank you all for bringing them. This is very nice. So with that, we're going to go to new employee introductions and we will introduce Albert Stricker and Elizabeth Smartman.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And the, the flow and organization of information is really pivotable to the ongoing operations at the city of Rancho Cordova. And it's the administrative assistant professionals here at the city that are, play a central role in ensuring that the information continues to flow and continues to, and continues to be organized. I wanted, we have two open positions that we're, that we're filling and I wanted to introduce first Dazan Tomlinson, who has extensive background in working at contracting and engineering companies and has already hit the ground running, doing excellent job for the city of Rancho Cordova.
My name is Dazan Tomlinson. Just a little bit of introduction to myself of what my past background is. I used to work for Western Engineering out in Loomis, um, also doing contracting and I used to work in the Bay Area. I am a San Jose State alumni. My father is a Vietnam War veteran. My mother is a self-proclaimed hairdresser with never-ending advice. I have three younger brothers, um, three children, and I'm very honored and humbled for this opportunity to work for the city of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Wonderful, welcome.
Good night.
And we have another administrative assistant, Natasha Erickson, who, um, unfortunately wasn't able to make it this evening, but she is all, also has already stepped in and is really helping our maintenance and operations team at the corporation yard to make sure that our residents' questions are answered in a timely manner and we deploy our team to address any concerns.
Well, I'm sure you could bring her back at some point.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you, Albert. Elizabeth?
Well, we're, we're really happy to be growing our team and I want to call up Joe Cuff to introduce Dawn.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to introduce Dawn Hendrickson. She's our newest employee in the Building and Safety Division. Um, she's a permit tech. Uh, she comes to us from a consultant company. She's been working with us for about a year and after that year, we decided to bring her onboard. Uh, her personality and her craftiness really, uh, struck a nerve with us and she's been our, kind of our go-to person for the excitement and fun stuff that we do now. So, uh, I would like to give Dawn an opportunity to kind of talk about herself a little bit.
Hello. I'm Dawn Hendrickson and like Jess said, I've been with the city as a contract employee, employee for quite a while now. And, um, I'm just happy I have the opportunity to be an employee here, sorry. And, um, thank you. Don't ask me a question.
So I have to say that Dawn is very popular with our customers. A lot of customers ask for Dawn specifically and she is the most helpful, friendliest face that we have at the city. And so we, we're really excited to have Dawn as part of the team.
You're welcome.
Um, do you do, um, uh, plan intake or, um, uh, plan checking or all of the above?
I guess all of the above, yeah.
Okay.
Answer questions for, uh, the residents or contractors or business people here. We take in, um, we process permits over the counter or do plan intake. Do something.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, sorry.
Real quick, uh, quick anecdote. Dawn came to us through a consultant company and had never had any experience working in government or a building department. It was a, uh, consultant company asked us if we'd take on a project. Here's a person that wants to work, wants to try this, has never done it before in her life. So we said, okay. Plus they gave us a discount. Um, over the year, she has become one of our-
Will work for candy.
Absolutely. She has become one of our most requested permit technicians. Uh, she handles a majority of our phone calls and she's actually been very helpful training, uh, our newest permit technician as a consultant, uh, to help get her back onboard with what we do. So I really appreciate all the hard work she's been doing for us.
Sounds great.
And I love my department, by the way. Absolutely love the people I work with.
Wonderful. We're very pleased.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we'll go to public comment. I know that a variety of you have filled out your speaker cards and, um, uh, remember that, um, you can address the, the council on any matter that's not on the agenda, but we cannot take any action on those items. And we will either, uh, refer you to a staff person or schedule something for a future agenda if, um, if it needs to be discussed, um, in the public. And, um, we'll ask that you take three minutes and Stacy will be watching the clock. And, um, go ahead, we have several people signed up, you said?
I have nine speaker cards. The first speaker is Carol Limbaga. Following Carol will be Sharon Judy. Following Sharon will be Walt Myers. If Carol can come forward, you'll have three minutes and if you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
I'm Carol Limbaga, Rancho Cordova resident. We'd like to talk to you about neighborhood services. Why do folks come here? Because the traditional way is not working. You know, older folks tend to be patient. They say please and thank you. They talk about one problem affecting only them or a small area around them. These folks follow the rules. Online ticket reporting, emails to various departments and to you, our city council members. Do drive-alongs, meet face-to-face with pop officers, code enforcement, city personnel, repeat reporting of chronic issues. No computer folks make a phone call that sometimes goes nowhere for various reasons. We have noticed that while you are listening to public comment talks, folks talking, you are thinking, what department or who in the back of the room or pop officer can I refer this person to? You may not know this, but when folks go, they are asked about that particular problem. Vows are made to resolve it and done. If folks say it's chronic, they are told to keep putting in tickets. Well, I'm here to tell you that we are frustrated and discouraged with this traditional way. This time, we would rather not be dismissed to the back of the room. We know that our officers are dumped with everything. They are overloaded, so they determine issues by priority. As an example, addressing chronic slum lords and rat issues takes care of many folks at one location. Kudos and regional recognition are given as they should be. And by the way, those folks are complaining that once every three years is not enough to keep slum lords in line. So the little guy with one issue just keeps getting pushed further back in line. Our bottom line is this, we think neighborhood services, code enforcement, and pop officers need an independent oversight person to pull little tickets. Some little tickets have been filed for over three years with no update, no resolution, and no change to be seen. Assign those tickets to someone. Make chronic a special category. Then give you, our city council, a quarterly report. How many tickets resolved, being worked on, yet to be addressed, chronic, redirected phone calls dealt with, give kudos for that. How to resolve, we don't have enough manpower, Measure H funds. Oh yes, this is what we originally voted for. We are faithfully aware that VINS has acknowledged at our state, was acknowledged at our State of the City address for giving out kudos. I'm sure you are aware that VINS are also, most importantly, your friendly watchdogs. We bring issues to your attention. Thank you.
Sharon Judy, if you can come forward? And please make sure to speak into the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
My name's Sharon Judy. I live on Rockingham Drive. Why is it that this city council can get the new bike pedestrian trail planned, designed, and built in a rather short amount of time when the Rockingham Drive and Abraham Lincoln Elementary Project is still in the process? My neighbors voted earlier this year with a hundred percent positive votes and a hundred percent return of ballots. We were told maybe July, well, that didn't happen. Then we were told October. That didn't happen either. Um, we're really just kind of losing our patience. We realize there's the process, but the process is taking almost two years. And quite frankly, it's getting pretty ridiculous and we're getting literally pissed.
So Sharon, can we ask you, uh, is it speed bumps?
Speed bumps and signage and speed readers.
Speed readers?
Those things that tell you what-
Oh, that tell you what your speed is?
Yeah, yeah.
So Cyrus says that it's coming to council?
Yes, it's, uh, that project is coming to the council for contract approval in second meeting in November. So the next meeting.
Okay.
It's been bid and it's been, it's going to be recommended to the council for contract award at the next meeting.
Yes, we keep getting told stuff and then it doesn't happen.
Okay, uh, so also what I'm hearing though is a communication issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sharon, I, I would add that bike trail that seemingly got built and developed so quick-
And it was.
-was actually a fourteen-year project because we need, required an act of Congress, perhaps an act of the legislature. We had to get a contract with railroads, had to get funding from several different sources. That was a, a nightmare of a project getting done. So it may have been built quickly, but for all of us, that felt like, my goodness, how could this, you know, how could we spend this much time getting it done?
Yeah.
But it had too many moving parts to be simple.
Okay.
Just a note of clarification on the neighborhood, uh, traffic management program that's coming to the council. Uh, the city council approved, uh, some Measure H funding for the project. In fact, the coun- the council's direction to staff was to set aside sufficient funding to take care of the backlog. So the project that's coming to the council at the next meeting is taking care of everything that we have on the waiting list and in our backlog. So since the council approval of the budget in, uh, July of two thousand, uh, eighteen, to come into a contract award at, in November, it's not actually a bad turnaround. So construction projects do take some time. And we also had to go to, uh, some neighborhood, of course, surveys. We had to make, be sure that the, the project has the support of the neighbors and some of the specifics had to be worked out.
Well, it's a hundred percent all the way around, it's just that a lot of people are getting very impatient.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the tough thing with a lot of projects like these especially is ones that you might not have been aware of that were being worked on and then you learn about them because they're at the final stages. You've been a part of this project from the very beginning and asking for it. And so it seems like that's taking longer than the thing that you learned about that, like David said, has been worked on for more than a decade.
Well, it's just that it's our kids. That's the main thing.
They're all very important, but they all take, they all take a, a process to, to be able to do them.
Okay. Thank you anyway.
Thank you.
Next, Walt Myers. Following Walt will be Angel Ball. Following Angel will be Carol Wilfley. And then following Carol will be Linda Doctor.
Good evening, Walt.
Good evening. My name's Walt Myers. I live in Rancho. For about three weeks, I've been trying to, uh, access the actual reading of the proposed or maybe it's passed already, the city ordinance regarding RV and boat storage on private property. I have emailed two council members, both did not respond. I talked to one at city hall and he said he would get back to me, but hasn't. I emailed the city manager and the city clerk and, um, both of them responded with an email that is unopenable. It's got a big red banner across it, says do not open. I tried to open it and it doesn't. And I'm advised it's some side of a, some sort of an IT problem here at city hall. I don't understand it. All I wanted was an answer. I'm not going to do anything with it. I thank both, both of you for trying. I do not have a boat or RV, but I do have about a quarter acre lot. And, uh, I have been told that that property of mine has lost some of its saleability because of this possible ordinance. Uh, people don't want a quarter acre of grass. They used to think of it as a, an access portion. Both sides of my property, of my house, could be used for access. There's more than enough property in that. All, all I really want, and again, I'll ask you mayor, someone to let me know, just, I just want to read it. I want to, before I get upset or argue with people, I'd like to read the, the actual wording. Now, I don't know why I can't find it in the files. Uh, if, if somebody can, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Um, Elizabeth, could you ask Planning to send him a copy? Just the, just that specific section? Okay?
I, I-
In a form that can be opened?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Without a red banner?
Yeah, that, that's all I want. I mean, I'd just like to read, like, if it was up, if it was at a city hall, you didn't answer me.
Well, no, well, let me answer you right now. So the, so the short answer is we repealed the entire rule, so it doesn't exist right now. And there, and there's a committee that I believe has been formed to work on-
And hasn't, and hasn't met.
Right. So there's no ordinance to send you-
So there's no committee.
Well, hang on, hang on. Walt, let me ask you. There is no ordinance right now, it's been repealed. It has been deleted from the code. Am I incorrect, insane?
At some, at some time, it was brought up at this council, right?
And it was, and, and we voted to repeal it. It's not illegal anymore.
Okay, all I would like to do is see what people are telling me.
It doesn't exist anymore. It doesn't exist anymore.
Well, but there is language in the, there is language-
There was language.
Well, there is language that addresses the issue and that's what we'll ask Planning to send to you.
But there is no language. It has been deleted. We could send him the old language.
If I may clarify, the, the latest language related to the ordinance, um, on boats and RVs, I emailed that to you, Mr. Walt, uh, Meyer, on Monday, October twenty-ninth. I'm, I'm sorry, I had no, no idea that you could not open it. So I'll be happy to give you a paper copy, a copy of it tomorrow if-
That's, that's all I would like to do and I'll return it to you because I don't want to jeopardize anything.
Yeah, no, I, I had no idea that you were not able to open it, so I'll be happy to give you a paper copy.
It's evidently quite well-known that something, I don't understand it, I-
Walt, something was passed and then about eight months later, in realizing that it was part of a much larger- was part of a much larger update of the code, the rest of us decided to repeal it and take it out of the code. So the short answer is, it does not exist. It is not illegal right now to park a boat in front of a house.
Excuse me. The city manager says you're going to take it up in the next month or two. That part of it, that part of your email I could read.
I haven't said that when the council will pick it up. I think what I'm --
And there's no language to vote on.
The latest copy of the language in our code related to boats and RVs, I will provide, give you a hard copy, paper copy of it, so you have it.
Fine, I guess.
I can give it to you as early as tomorrow morning.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
Next speaker is Angel Ball. Following Angel will be Carol Wilfley, followed by Linda Doctor.
Good evening. My name is Angel Ball, and I live in the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm sorry, good evening, Mayor Budge, Vice Mayor McGarvey, city council, and city staff. In 2016, I was proud to see Neighborhood Services Department kick off a year with public meetings to share with residents their responsibility to be a good neighbor. You asked for our input and gathered our concerns. You hired a consultant to interview your staff and provide feedback. I was honored as the leader of the volunteers in Neighborhood Services to be a part of this process. Neighborhood Services review was discussed at a public workshop September 13th, 2016. Two years, six weeks later, it's time to review the review. I will now quote a few concerns from page eight. Dead trees, trees, blight, debris, patrolling neighborhoods, doing a 360 when responding to a complaint or violation, educating people about what code enforcement does and is responsible for, more attention to converted garages, cars parked on the street, lawn parking, grass too high, garbage cans, education of code violations, information, illustrations, photos, and flyers, no code enforcement volunteer program, addresses not being labeled on homes, perception that the neighborhood isn't bad, that it just doesn't need as much attention, minor issues ignored while focus is placed on major issues leading to a slow decline overall, end quote. Today, the list is the same. Little has improved. City council asked Neighborhood Services to take on more work responsibilities with no additional resources. Then you add more responsibilities. When you add more responsibilities, you need to staff and fund them. When you do not, our neighborhoods suffer. Based on the conditions of our neighborhoods, the core responsibilities are not being met, 360 is not being done, no follow-up or follow-up goes on for years, Neighborhood Services is reactive, not proactive. City council has been very good in the past at working with Rancho Cordova Police Department to strengthen our police force, community engagement, and making us feel safer in our own neighborhoods. I'm asking city council to use the same strategies with the Neighborhood Services Department to increase their visibility, engage with neighbors, and build community trust and support. How about monthly or bimonthly meetings, just like Neighborhood Watch? This would allow residents to become engaged, meet the people that support us, and become a part of the solution. As a leader in VINS, I am proud to say that we meet together once a month to talk about how to improve our neighborhoods and communities. We find a path forward and improve our neighborhoods. This is why I enjoy VINS. My request tonight is, think big city leaders. Let's keep this conversation going. I'm happy to take you on a tour of my neighborhood. I'm not able to share everything in a three-minute period. The VINS also want you to know that you're welcome at any VINS meeting. Our next meeting is December 6th here at City Hall, 3 o'clock. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you for listening.
Angel, thank you very much for your suggestions. The, as a part of preparation for the next budget cycle, it's important to all of us that we sit down and determine priorities. And so Cyrus is planning a workshop, just in the next couple of months, where we'll have an opportunity to do that and look at that list of things that you're talking about and decide which are the most important priorities that need to be addressed and just kind of rank them. But your idea to do a sort of a neighborhood model of code enforcement is a really neat idea also. So thank you for making this suggestion.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Carol?
Hi, Stacy. Mayor, city council, and city staff, my name is Carol Wilfley, and I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova now for almost 30 years. And I'm very thankful for all the positive changes to our city over the past several years. I'm especially appreciative of the Rancho Cordova Police Department, Rancho Cordova Fire Department, and our great code enforcement staff. My really, my only reason here right now is to support my VINS facilitator, Angel Ball. She's been, I'm not sure how many years she's been facilitating the volunteer Neighborhood Services, but I've been on a couple of years myself, and she's invaluable. And for her to come up here and request that you two, that, you know, as a city council to continue conversation as she's requested is my only request. And we would love to see any of you. We've seen some of you already at our VINS meetings as speakers, and we appreciate it, and we hope to see more of you. So, thank you.
Super. Thank you, Carol.
Linda Doctor. Following Linda will be Greg Ball. Following Greg will be Joyce Rosenberg.
Good evening, city council, Mayor Linda Budge. My name's Linda Doctor, and I've been a resident for approximately 40 years. I just do want to also support Angel and our VINS leader. I've enjoyed being in VINS immensely. I've learned so much of what's going on in the city and what you do for the city and what code enforcement, the police department, et cetera, do for the city. And I really do appreciate code enforcement. I agree with Angel, and I would also like to invite any one of you to a VINS meeting so that we, three minutes isn't long enough to really get into our concerns. You know, a good idea would be come in and give us your input and allow us to give ours. More than three minutes, that's all I have, and thank you for listening.
I can also tell you that after the State of the City speech the other night, you know, I asked everybody who wanted to be a part of VINS to contact Lori Ann, and she said she had several people contact her.
That's great.
So maybe we'll get you some more help.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you so much for that.
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Greg Ball. I know all of you, and you know me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, everyone else in this room. And I don't mean to correct you, but my thinking would be to direct them to Angel Ball if it's a VINS issue as opposed to Lori Ann. That's just my thought.
No, no, no. It was to sign up to be part of VINS.
That's why they would see Angel, I think. But anyway, that's, I didn't come up here to argue with you. What I want to talk about, I want to touch on the fact that I think the last time I was up here at the microphone was about eight months ago, seven months, whatever, March or April. We were having some, I think, really good city involvement from the citizens, the issue being RV parking in driveways, and not just RVs, trailers, boats. You guys know the issue, so I don't need to beat a dead horse. It was mentioned a few minutes ago, and what I wanted to talk about tonight was because that code was voted down, there was a committee that was to be formed of people that kind of sat on both sides of the issue to take a look at what are these issues, what can be fixed, if anything, or whatnot, before you get into having to do codes or, from our position, maybe a proposition. I don't know. But I have not heard anything about the committee as far as, has it been formed? How many people are on it? How often has it met? What has it accomplished? And my reason for bringing it up tonight is to get an update, and if not, to make sure that all of you at this council know that this issue is not dead. As a matter of fact, it will probably rear its head pretty soon. So I'd like to know what's going on with the committee if I could.
We understand. The committee was formed. The committee has met a couple of times. There are two completely different perspectives on the world, and they are at loggerheads. And quite frankly, we are scratching our heads on how to get them off total opposition to each other.
So at this point, then, they'll be meeting again soon?
They'll be meeting again.
And, well, see, that's part of the reason why I'm up here, is have, they've met at least once? Because it's kind of like a mystery committee to me. I mean, I'm not doubting it's in existence.
Well, no, remember that we actually asked them to, we actually asked people to turn in applications or just, you know, give us, express some interest, tell us why they wanted to be on the committee.
Well, here's a simple question. How many times have they met?
Twice.
I believe the committee has met twice. And the last meeting was scheduled for July 10th, I recall very specifically. And we received a call from about a couple of days before that that most people who have boats and RVs, that's the time of the year that they would like to get on the road and be traveling and using their boats and RVs. And they requested that no meetings be held until the fall time so they can, after the summer holidays, before they can convene. So that was the last time that the committee, a discussion was had about the committee.
Okay, so it's been four months, and they're going to meet soon, we hope. And I think that you're getting the message, so I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
So, did we have, following Greg is Joyce Rosenberg, and following Joyce will be Maureen Nelson.
Mayor, city council, city staff, my name is Joyce Rosenberg. I've lived on Audubon Way, a very short street from Agregor to Cordova Lane, since 1973. I was a working mother, raising three children by myself, working full-time, going to school, getting my degree, and I didn't look around my neighborhood. I went to work, I came home. Go to Little League Park, came home. Went to college, came home. After I retired, recently, two things happened. I joined VINS, and I got a dog. Now, every single day when I leave my house, the appearance of my street is on my mind. I have a tree within eyesight of my house that looks like it was struck by lightning or came out of a horror movie. It is jiggy-jaggy all over the place. It was a product of a really good tree surgeon. I also get to look at a battered car in a driveway along with two other cars in the driveway and two cars in front of the house. God only knows what they've got in the garage. Tree stumps, lots of garbage cans, which really irritate me, a camper, a trailer, and lots and lots of houses who were built around the time of my house, which was built in '67, that still don't have house numbers on them, which I think is horrible. Anyway, two and a half years ago, when the meeting came up and a consultant was hired to listen to our grievances, our gripes, our suggestions, and our ideas, we know a report came out that said, here are the things you want, and here are the things we can do. I haven't seen anything happen from that yet. So the stumps and the no streets, house signs, and all that is still happening. It's really frustrating, and it's not code enforcement's problem because they're out there. I am so tired of seeing things on the next door that say, "Code enforcement Nazis." I hate it. I hate it. I hate it. But they can only do so much, and when the emphasis is on everything, the emphasis ends up on nothing, it seems like to me. Anyway, I like Angel's idea of having a meeting sort of like Neighborhood Watch with code enforcement because I think they need good PR, they need good information to the people out there, telling them what on earth they're doing and why they're doing it, not because they're code Nazis, because they're trying to improve the city's looks. I think that would be helpful for all of us. And as a member of VINS, I'm feeling very frustrated that things aren't happening because I feel like I'm shouting into the wilderness. I know that lately, we've heard, at the birthday of the city, we talked, everybody talked about what a great city it was. Let's make it great. Thank you.
So it's the, again, it's the priority setting because you're absolutely right. You know, when you, one of the things that Cyrus has been trying to organize for everybody is to make sure that we know what the top priorities are so that things can be ranked. And, you know, is tall grass more important than garbage cans? Or, well, it's also part of the reason now that we have the beautification project that will remove stumps. You know, so we need, you're right, we need to get those people involved in a stump removal program.
When are they going to start removing stumps?
They have already.
Do they? Have they?
Yeah.
Well, come to my street. Let me show you some stumps. Let me show you a couple of stumps on my walk that are at least 18 feet high. That's really bad.
Yeah. No, I know what you mean. Actually, Saturday, when we were planting trees in Lincoln Village, we identified a couple of very nice stumps that need to be removed.
Madam Mayor, if I make a comment about the stumps, we, the city council approved some Measure H funding to provide for street beautification, including removing stumps and landscape improvements. We reached out to residents, tried our best, and it was difficult, and it's really hard to comprehend because we didn't have too many takers and residents that really wanted to take advantage of it. So we thought, you know, maybe another approach could be for the city to actually hire a contractor and for us to go knock on doors and offer the stump to be removed. So that's our next step because the effort that we did with providing the incentives and the funding to property owners had limited success. Some residents took advantage of it, but the vast majority of the people did not. So we think this is, we're going to give this other approach a try, so.
Sort of like the chain link fences that kind of like.
Yeah, so, right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Joyce. Maureen, welcome. You can put the podium down if you want.
Okay. Mayor Budge and Councilman, thank you. My name is Maureen Nelson. I've lived here since 1986. I live in the Walnutwood section and older section. I came and spoke to the council 10 years ago after Ken Cooley told me to do it. I was complaining about the furniture and trash in the streets, and I remember Linda Budge agreed with me because she saw what I was talking about. We still have the same problem. We have garbage and mattresses and furniture in the street. Walnutwood, I mean Queenwood, is a beautiful street, but the end of Queenwood and Scotsman, you have a corner with a couch and a bassinet, and all these things just keep growing and growing. I watched it purposely for three weeks. Nobody called it in. There's also a duplex there that has trash and an appliance, and nobody calls them in. And what I'd really like to see is if there's maybe somebody would go around once a week and go around and just write down all these addresses and about all these people that have junk in the street that they haven't called it in. They don't follow the bulky pickup rule three a year, but someone needs to go around and report it. There's also not any addresses on the houses, so it's hard to report, and it's hard to write down stuff when you're driving and you're trying to see what you want to report. I stopped reporting stuff because I just got tired of it. It's very discouraging when you see your neighborhood day after day and you're looking at garbage, but I finally started picking it up. So that's all I wanted to say, is that I wish that someone maybe once a week would go around and just drive the whole area and see what we're talking about. There is garbage in the street and furniture. And I thank you, David, for mentioning the older part of Rancho because we appreciate that. So thank you very much.
We do have wonderful cooperation from Republic. When people report things, they will go out and pick it up. So we really could have, we could have asked them to pick that one up.
Yeah, well, they, you know, they pick it up when you call. It's just that people don't report it, and it's, you know, it's all over the city. So, anyway.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
I want to say thank you for that also because it's been, the same thing with me. I go by and see people in different parts of the city, and I time it and see how many days or even weeks sometimes, and I call them myself. It seems like it's not that hard to pick up the phone, make a phone call. hard to pick up the phone, make a phone call, to have the garbage disposal people come and pick it up. It doesn't cost anything if you call. Thanks, anyway.
Do we have anybody else signed up?
No.
Okay, then we will go on to council reports. Donald, do you want to start?
Yeah, I'm just going to bring up about the study mission. On my calendar, it's showing that we haven't had a meeting since I went on the study mission to Brooklyn, but I swear I thought I came here and talked about it. Actually, I did, because I talked about the parks. Never mind, I won't talk about it. First, I'll start with the state of the city. Linda, you did a great job. Staff and everybody that was involved this year, the video was great. The music was great, and the singing and everything else. So thanks to everybody that worked really hard on that. I did attend the state of the county and heard Susan Peters talk about how they're functioning over there and all of the work that they're, that they're doing. And that was very interesting. I want to commend staff and the folks out at Doug 98. There was a barbecue held a week and a half ago, about. I know Bob, you, I saw you there. And the developers and everybody, we're giving lots of kudos to our planning staff and our frontline staff here at the, at City Hall. If you have not been out there, it is a massive undertaking, and it looks like that road's almost done. I luckily came in from the grant line side, which was, I think, a little bit more done than when I went out and went back the other way, a little bit more rocky. But look, some really, really cool stuff going on right now, and some very, very big stuff moving around out there. So if you haven't had a chance, get out there soon. I think I'm allowed to say this about the Elk Grove 2x2, and I'm looking at my city manager to nod at me before I actually say it about the Elk Grove 2x2, that I can actually say what we learned. But I will soften it a little bit, which was that the school district is looking to move forward with the planning and acquisition of the land for the new high school in the South area.
Well, it's about time.
Right. So there was some options outside of the city, in the county, in the unincorporated county, that were somewhat in the running, but I think we've gotten to a point where the school district is moving forward with the site in Sun Creek, which I think is really, really exciting. I am not going to put any timelines or say anything beyond that, but it is very exciting that, in meeting with the superintendent and their deputy superintendent, that they are starting the process of moving forward with that. And I know Cyrus and Elizabeth and the rest of the team here have been working very, very hard over the last few years to build a better relationship with the school district there, and to explore options of speeding up the development of that high school. For, we know that one of the biggest struggles in the South area and the Elk Grove side is that when families have their children getting to junior high and high school, we have a mass exodus of families that either move closer to Pleasant Grove or move closer to other high schools because of the commute. Not everybody, but probably half of all families start to consider when most of their kids are in junior high. I had the opportunity to attend the Municipal Management Association of Northern California's conference at Tenaya Lodge, where I saw Lori Anne and Randwire Voss present on our community engagement strategy. It was a packed room. There was a lot of interest from city officials throughout California, or throughout Northern California, about what we were doing here and how we were doing it, and how they could replicate it in their own city. So congratulations to everybody for that. And then, finally, I just want to thank city staff who helped coordinate my responses and participation in the 40 under 40 list with the Business Journal. There's going to be an event. I think it's on our calendars. If you'd like to attend, would love to have you all there. Thank you.
Garrett.
First of all, I know she's probably watching outside, but Angel, when Angel and I did that walk, we really, she came through and took me, and we went and toured more Rancho. And we basically identified that stumps are kind of like old cars of the Rancho Cordova area, and we kind of need to treat them like that. It's just something that needs to get picked up and put out. So excellent job on deciding that we're going to start going forward and just knocking on people's doors and see if we can do anything to help them out to improve their property. Because every time you remove a stump, the property itself goes up by 3,000 to 4,000, and we want to help out our citizens. I got to do, okay, so here we go. We did a whistle stop, which is very interesting. You get to wear a train hat and then give a speech. The Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce luncheon was awesome. I went to the Ram Gala, which is celebrating them. My soccer team beat Folsom, which is always awesome, multiple times. Good job, Garrett and Owen. That's my seven, that's the 11-year-olds bringing it to them. I got to go to a barbecue honoring our officer, Mark, that was given. That's amazing that our citizens, even now, are still putting up ribbons and donating money. We have something that is extremely important but extremely boring. It's called the South Sacramento Habitat was finally put together. I was there. You're now looking right across from me at the vice president or of the chair. I tried to make her the chair. She refused, but she actually did refuse. They were going to vote for her. And she's like, no, please, don't make me do this. But she's now, it's going to help out with us building, and I'm glad that we actually got it formed. And I'm glad I got to be here right at the end to get the kudos for putting together something that took literally 25 years to do. And, gee, that's amazing.
1991.
1991. Went to the amazing state of the city, and I got, huh?
27.
27 years. Good Lord. I got to go to State of the City and see one of our council members give an amazing speech. It's always good to see what changes are happening in the city and the growth. I got to go to the Sacramento Library Group, and they're, they're very excited about what we're doing in Rancho, and they would love to put another library here in Rancho Cordova someday, probably next to a school. The Elk Grove 2x2, I, he gave it very loose. I'm not going to be loose. I'm very excited. Rancho Cordova will be getting a new high school, high school, junior high, because it's a mix. They said they're going to put a sign in the ground. I was like, can we put the sign in the ground now? They're like, we don't do signs, but please feel free to put a sign in the ground, so that people that have junior high, middle-aged kids do not leave. Guys, we're getting a high school over there in the Anatolia area. You do not need to leave. Stay here, be part of our community. We are going to have that for you guys.
I, I think the important part about the sign is, there's not a road within about a half a mile of it or more.
I'm sitting here wondering, where would you put a sign, Garrett?
It's right, just.
Where that would be, there's no road anywhere near.
Well, just put it near the road. And I know, just stop being ruining my, rain?
Need a horse.
School in this general direction.
Right, school over here with an arrow pointing that way. I just want something. Look, we're trying to encourage. The Gun, Rancho Cordova Gun Club had their monthly luncheon. That was awesome. Rancho Cordova Chamber Breakfast, that was amazing. I got to go to the state of county, and then that is about it for all these things that I've had to attend and enjoyed attending.
Thank you, David.
A few things, similar to my colleagues. I attended the Sacramento Business Journal Innovation Awards last Thursday, because CICOG was nominated for our Civic Lab function. We did not win, but to be nominated is the win.
Absolutely.
They nominate two or three in the category, and they pick one of them as the big winner. Interestingly enough, Tritool here in Rancho Cordova was also nominated, as was, well, Five Star Bank was a sponsor. So Rancho, and there may have been other Rancho Cordova interests. I'm not 100% sure. But it was really neat to see Rancho Cordova sort of in a headline role there with, with Tritool and Five Star, as sort of ahead, at the head of the innovation work going on in the Sacramento region. The other interesting subtext to that event was when you looked at the innovation award winners around the region. UC Davis fit in to a dozen of them or more. And our relationship with UC Davis in terms of innovation and supporting, because they have greater and greater emphasis on supporting spinoffs of local tech, of their technology locally, we should probably find additional ways to network with them and work with them to allow that innovation to, you know, be fostered here in Rancho Cordova.
It seems like the organization that we entertained in October, the manufacturing, manufacturers council, we were all at something where those, oh, it was the Folsom-Cordova Breakfast, state of the school district. They're actually a very active group, and because some of their board members own businesses here in Rancho Cordova, it seems like that might be a really good way to, to get into the university and what they're doing.
Right, P.
In terms of innovation.
I was also a victim, a repeat victim, of the haunted house put on by the Cordova Community Council here in.
That's punishment.
Rancho Cordova. Yeah, I would recommend in future years that kids be, I don't know, 10, 12, something.
Absolutely.
Before they go through, particularly the one that is.
16. I am not having an 11-year-old jump back in my bed to where I can't sleep. 16. That's where you start.
Well, some of them were more artistic, you know, like the Alice in Wonderland 3D thing. That was really unique and almost art-like. But the one that's total darkness underground in the tunnels, that I would not recommend for anyone younger than 16. I would agree with you. It was, it was impressive. Yes, yes. There are four separate haunts you can go to there, the way they had it set up this year. And then there's another, there are other outdoor activities, too.
Well, we had some city staff who kept trying, who did go down there and who kept trying to leave, and the city manager wouldn't let them go.
I did see a large number of, on one of my visits there, a large number of city staff running away from the building. So I don't, it must have been an interesting experience. They, and they weren't all recognizable, interestingly.
All 22 hours.
Yeah, somebody we know had, somebody we know ran around with her blanket over her head the whole time.
Well, there goes the retention.
So much for retaining staff. Anyway, that was a tremendous, a tremendous victory, I think. And you'll hear more from the community council about the, the financial aspect of that. But I think that was a great win for, for us in Rancho Cordova and for the community council. I went to the Junior Lancers Year-End Party, and on behalf of that organization that had their year-end party here in City Hall, thank you for your support and rescue of them this past fiscal year. They were a large, boisterous crowd, obviously very engaged in the organization, very happy at its success this year. And we can all, you know, I, and I expressed to them, not only the city council and the city's support for their activities, but also the fact that the leaders of their competition sports, you know, soccer, baseball, softball, swimming, those were the folks who stood up to save the junior football program in terms of the organization. So it was, I think it was a good message for them, and they had, you know, great cheers for us. So I'll hand that back to you. I spent a week in Yosemite, so my, the number of city things I've done here is a little shorter than normal. I've attended several Cordova High Football Games. Happy to see them going on. They won their conference. Now they've won the first game in the playoffs, so they're headed for, who knows, section championship, something cool. It's happy to see the success there. And Garrett and I and Cyrus attended Regions Business Board Meeting. Was it three weeks ago?
Yeah.
Something like that. And they were really, really pleased with our participation in the RISE program, and largely credited us with allowing that to happen in the region. And they sort of said, you know, if it wasn't for you, this would not have worked in the region, and more great things are coming from RISE. So I think that's, that's something we should probably get some feedback on here as a council. And, you know, feedback as to whether or not we think it's working this first year or more that we've been in, and how our growth might be accomplished if we're, if we're interested in that.
Very good.
And I think that is my report.
Okay, Bob.
Yeah, Donald, yeah, I was there at the barbecue. There were so many people that came out, the police from different locations. The Hyatt Patrol was there, the people from, I saw, police from Folsom, from Rancho Cordova, the sheriff, it just went on. But they're all there to, for support of the officer, Stasiak. So that was very nice. Let's see. I talked to our Robert J. McGurvy Elementary School principal, and he said that the last four high schools that were built in Elk Grove, it was a high school slash middle school. So that's what they're going to be, they're planning on building in the Anatolia area. It'll be both. I know there are a lot of people who have kids there that are going to the elementary schools, and then after that's done, then they have to go in a, get in a bus and get to, to the middle schools and get to the high school, whatever it is. And it's really something that a lot of the parents are unhappy with, because when you have a child in a bus for a half an hour to an hour and a half, it really is a heck of a day, each day, for the child and for the parents. So I'm really glad to hear that they're going to be building the middle school and the high school. They'll have a space in between them. It's going to be built, you know, side by side. So that's, I'm feeling it's going to be really good, I think. My hat's off to Linda for the state of the city. That was very good, very good. It's, a lot of people learned an awful lot. As far as Halloween, I think I had five kids knock on my door, and four of them were grandkids, and one of them was a friend. So not too many people were in the street where I live. So, but they were fun, and it was good watching them. I've been watching the, quite a few voters who come into City Hall, and I don't think they'll be as many disappear, but if you look, the, it takes about two days, and those two stacks of grapevine disappear, along with the people coming in to make, to put their vote in, in there. So I thought, well, if they would be that interested, maybe they'll come back. But willing to bet, after the vote, there won't be as many people coming in, picking up the grapevine. But at least they learned something about the city. And the, it's going to be, in, next month, we'll have a tour. I have to find out when, of the advance into the Veterans Village. I know we're going to have, if you go look at it right now, they're working on the building, the two-story building. They have, on the inside, the L shape, they've already taken out a huge wall part for two, for a door going in, two doors going into the building. And they have completed the roof and everything on the third story of the apartments. So that's something that's in the process also. I know we're, and the 11th Sunday coming up is the Veterans Day Observance, and it's going to be at the VA Hospital, as usual. A keynote speaker can be Robert Colonel, Robert Martinelli. He's a former base commander of Mather Air Force Base, so he should have some interesting things to say, I think, being the keynote speaker. So anyway, there's an awful lot going on around Mather and the rest of the city. I wish we could do more instantly, but unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. Just like you said, the bike trail pedestrian thing, 14 years. That, well, maybe we can get things done a little bit sooner. The only thing that took longer than that was becoming a city. Other than that, it's, I'm done.
HCP took longer.
HCP's a quarter.
I think we just learned that today.
So it seems like, I mean, I think it's only been two weeks since we've met, but I think I've got four weeks' worth of stuff on the list. So Cyrus and I attended the 60th Anniversary of Mills Middle School, which was, it could have been better attended, but it was, it was really neat to hear from the people who were there. We also entertained a delegation from Ukraine. It was supposed to have been a mayor of one of the cities, but instead it, it turned out to be representatives that he sent, and there was a gentleman who was in their state legislature. And as, every time we have met with people from overseas, whether it's been Europe or Eastern Europe, anywhere, their perspective on what's going on in the world is so dramatically different from what we hear in our media. It is really very enlightening. It's, and we're, I know we're always appreciative when people want to take their time and come and visit us here. I was asked to judge a doggy Halloween costume contest, which was absolutely hilarious. Regional Transit Met, and we have had several internal meetings about regional transit and their proposal for revising bus routes, and we're not finished with that topic by a long shot. The Folsom-Cordova Unified School District State of Their District Breakfast was very well-attended, and it was an extremely good event. They changed it up, so instead of just handing out awards to everybody who had participated with the school district, the superintendent actually, and I gave you all a copy of it. It was like. It was like, it was like a large piece of paper with all these statistics and lists of all the many dozens of organizations that have participated with the school district. And then she, she just really did a state of the district speech, and it was absolutely fascinating to hear what all is going on. And there's so much going on at our schools here in Ranch of Cordova that we don't hear about because we, some of us don't have kids in school anymore. But there's really, it's an incredible program they're running in this district. Cyrus and I met with our county public health officer, which was another very interesting conversation, and we think Kerry was in that meeting. And we think we have probably begun to establish a better relationship with that office and look for ways that we can partner together on different public health issues. Yes, the HCP meeting was kind of routine and pretty boring, and it may get worse as time get on, but maybe it'll get a little better. Our, Two by Two with Metro Fire was wonderful, and I see we have people from Metro Fire with us today as a result of that meeting, and we appreciate your being here. The city lunch, the Halloween lunch, is always absolutely eye-opening because this year it was not as spooky as it was last year because they managed to leave all the lights on. But the creativity of city staff and the different departments in selecting their theme, selecting their costumes, always, never ceases to amaze. I attended the Dia de los Muertos at Walnutwood School. And last year, some of the, some of the descriptions, some of the letters, their letters, that people have written to their relatives who have passed on, an awful lot of abuelas and a lot of, and uncles and favorite aunts and that kind of thing. But those all made it into one of those books by 916, Inc. And they were talking about whether or not they would be able to do that again this year. The 50 Carder TMA had a meeting about the loner bike project, like jump bikes, except this is not jump bikes. This is a company from the East Coast called Gacha. And the young man was very, very impressive in terms of the project or the program that he can bring to Ranch of Cordova and Folsom. The Russian Gala was as lovely and interesting as it always is, and the food was never-ending, which was, which is always amazing. We had a great time planting trees in Lincoln Village. We planted the 1,000th tree in this program. You remember that we set out to plant a tree for every day of the year, and as Steve Herriman has told us, vastly exceeded that. But then we started this program in Lincoln Village Park, and we went back to Lincoln Village Park to plant tree number 1,000. And, and then we went and planted some trees in other people's yards. But here again, like the, as the people from Vins were saying, and I'm sorry they left because it's really important that they continue to report the things that they see rather than to just let it go for three weeks and not, not pick up the phone and say anything. But tree planting is one of the ways that we can help to beautify our neighborhoods. We can take out stumps, we can take out chain link fences, but we can help people plant a tree. And this time, thanks to Sorbonne Farm, because we had about eight partners, but thanks to Sorbonne Farm, we were able to plant fruit trees. Some of our wonderful home builders plant these nice decorative trees as they build houses. And I know we've got people in the room who know what I'm talking about because I suspect there's a whole bunch of us who've lived with a fruitless mulberry in their front yard for a while. Worst tree in the world. But we've, we're planting fruit trees, and we hope that, because these are trees that will not just benefit the environment and our own personal environment, but will also provide food and healthy, healthy food and fruit for the people who live there. We're hoping these trees will have better longevity than some of our decorative trees. I'm blessed with a tree that does something, does something 10 months out of the year. It's just not very fun. And then this morning, David and I attended the SPTC JPA, the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Carter Joint Powers Authority. And Valley Vision has come up with the idea of doing what they're calling the Epic Trail, which would start at Lake Tahoe, run down through Eldorado County, come down through Folsom and Ranch of Cordova, and ultimately connect to trails that, that are planned and under development in the Bay Area. And they wanted the JPA to fund part of it, and unfortunately, the JPA is just not convinced that there's going to be a lot of benefit, the study that they want to produce is going to be a lot of benefit to the JPA. So we ended up continuing that whole discussion to the next meeting, and this is an organization that only meets every three months. So we won't be meeting again until February of next year. And we need to close tonight's meeting in honor of a very nice couple who moved away and then ultimately they have passed on. Lorene and Ernie Conrad, who lived in the Walnutwood area. They, their son-in-law put this on the internet the other day and texted or emailed everybody who's on that Walnutwood next door because these people apparently were the grand marshal of every parade that they ever had in the Walnutwood area. It was really very sweet. And both Lorene and Ernie have left us now. And he was a veteran, he was with the Navy instead of having come with Mather, but we would ask to adjourn the meeting in their memory. So Bob, did you have something you wanted to add?
Right. I, you know, we were talking about you can't see the forest for the trees.
Right.
Well, sometimes I can't see on my notes because of the papers. So I missed this one, but the Ranch of Cordova luncheon, November the 16th here at City Hall, the speakers are gonna be talking about Veterans Village.
Very good.
And that's something I think that would educate a lot of people. Stefan Heisner and Jason Henry will be talking about the Veterans Village. So if you wanna find out more, it won't be a tour, but you'll have an awful lot of information you can gather from this, from these two speakers about the Veterans Village.
Super. Thank you, Bob. Cyrus?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to build on the discussion or your presentation about the tree planting event, this event on the Friday was by far our largest tree planting event. We planted over 105 trees, and we had over 120 volunteers who participate in the program. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank our partners. We have Sacramento Tree Foundation, SMUT, and Sorbonne Farm, our internal public work teams, Public Works, our community engagement, and also our communications team, we're all out in force. And Good Day Sacramento also showed up to cover that story on Saturday morning.
Can we add that in addition to two groups of students from Cordova High, we also have students from McClatchy High, and then we had Ranch of Cordova Rotary, and then, of course, it takes Lincoln Village, who came to plant the trees. So it was, it was a wonderful group.
Quite a, quite a turnout, and it went on almost all day.
And the Park District.
And CRPD as well. The other point I wanted to make was we received recommendations from SECOC for the last, for the current round of funding for infrastructure projects. And I'm pleased to say that we have the recommendations that do include close to $8 million of federal and state grants for the city. So congratulations to our Public Works team for putting a great application, set of applications together. And that funding will be ultimately approved by SECOC board. And last, but not least, I wanted to also mention that Kerry Simpson, our co-enforcement manager, has been, was nominated and was appointed as the president of the California Association of Code Officers, CASIO. This is quite an accomplishment. We do always...
Goodness gracious.
And we always do encourage our staff to participate in professional organizations, assume leadership roles, and be leaders of thought. And Kerry has always been very involved and has always participated, and this is a testimony to the good work that she's done. She, and this is, if you have been involved in professional organizations, there's a great deal of commitment after hours on the weekends from family and personal time. So this is, this is definitely a great accomplishment. Encouragement relations, Kerry. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move into the consent calendar. Consent items are deemed routine in nature and can be approved with one motion unless somebody wants to pull an item from the agenda.
Shall I move?
Okay.
Actually, Garrett did it first, I'll second.
Okay, so I actually want to pull item 9.6. I know we have a representative from Woodside Homes, the builder here, and I have a question.
So I'll move the balance of the calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. So would you read 9.6 into the record, please?
A resolution approving the final map for Douglas 98 Phase 1, subdivision number FM 2018 00402, and execution of the subdivision improvement agreement.
Okay, so we have somebody with Woodside Homes?
Good evening, Brian Cutting.
Hey, Brian. So I know we saw, I know that we approved this ages ago, and that's why you're at this stage. I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting the map correctly. That, I don't, I don't know where you got the names for these streets, but McCarracher?
McCarraker.
McCarraker?
Yes.
The big one that goes around the park? Just confirm that the houses are actually facing the park?
Yes.
So they're alley-loaded?
Correct.
Okay, because I first interpreted the, what's probably the PUE then. I first, I think I interpreted that as the backyard, and then it dawned on me it said alley, so.
Yes, there are, there are public, there is the, there is an easement in the alley. Correct.
Okay, super. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
So then I will move 9.6. Call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Thank you, Brian. Okay, we have a consent public hearing item. Stacy, you want to read that into the record?
An ordinance amending Chapter 17 dot 04 of the Ranch of Cordova Municipal Code relating to the adoption of the state fire code with local amendments.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone came to speak to this item. And seeing nobody jumping up, we will close the hearing and...
Got him?
Ask, thank you. Thank you. If you want to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have one public hearing item. If you want to read that one.
Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing for Financing of San Juan Soccer Club Improvements.
Did you want to make a presentation?
I'm just gonna introduce the item. This is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing on behalf of San Juan Soccer Club. The San Juan Soccer Club is a nonprofit entity located in the city of Ranch of Cordova. In order to issue tax exam financing, they, we need to hold this public hearing on their behalf. I just want to reiterate that this is not city financing. This is only a public hearing on behalf of the soccer club. And I believe we have representatives here if you have any questions.
So this is just one of those state mandates that doesn't make any frickin' sense, but we have to do anyways.
Then we will open...
This clearly should be a ministerial...
Then we will open the public hearing and ask if anybody came to speak to the item. Or do we have any questions for the San Juan Soccer Club?
How's it going out there? See a lot of people. Can't wait for my son to play there.
Tons, tons of people. And they're, and they're there, they're there every day. It's just amazing. Yeah. Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
Move the item?
Thank you, Stacy.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And our apologies to the soccer club and Kim for having to stay late to see, to do this when it really shouldn't have been something that somebody else could have signed off on. Good luck.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we'll move into regular calendar items.
And Madam Mayor, just, I noticed the city manager is out of the room right now. Perhaps it would be smart of you to take up item number 12, too.
Okay. You want to read 12.2 into the record?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Ranch of Cordova approving a 5% performance incentive payment and an amended and restated employment agreement between the city and Cyrus Abhar for service as city manager, and a resolution of the city council of the city of Ranch of Cordova approving the amended full-time employee salary schedule.
Okay.
Thank you. May I briefly present, Madam?
Oh, sure, absolutely. I was looking at HR, so go right ahead.
This is really the fourth step in a process that the council goes through regarding the city manager's performance and adjustments to it. You might just step back. We're taking your item. The council first conducts the city manager's performance valuation, and this year it did so and concluded with very positive results, stating, among other things, that the city manager is a very high-functioning city manager, leading a high-functioning team. The city council, then, following those detailed considerations of performance, including performance based upon specific measures that it considers annually, it can be asked to consider whether or not there is any appropriate compensation adjustments that might be in order. And that part, that portion of the conversations that the council has in closed session occur in private without the city manager present. But they are informed by a detailed review of applicable information gathered from the region, and that is prepared by RHR department. So they take a close look at what's happening in the region based upon the same sample size and sample of agencies that are used for all of the city's other employees. And what, step, step four is now the, under the Brown Act, the public conversation that we are having here tonight. And the specific actions that are before you is, one, an action involving a maximum 5% performance incentive amount that has been recommended for consideration by the council. All of these have been recommended for consideration by the council in this open session. Second is an annual base salary increase of 5% to $258,152. And finally, the last two items are an increase in his universal time off allowance from 400 to 600 hours. That's actually consistent with what prior approvals had been. And finally, a auto allowance in the amount of $500 a month. Then each of these items are then, the, rather, the salary schedule is going to be reflected in a adopted employee salary schedule that would then be published and satisfy our applicable requirements with the state. To the HR director, have I missed anything that we should comment? To the HR director, have I missed anything that we should comment on to the council? But given the particular reporting requirements for this item, Madam Mayor or whomever else might consider making the motion, we would ask that you, as council members or as the mayor, read the specific recommendation into the record.
Did HR have anything that you want to add? Okay. So you just want me to read the?
If you have no, if you have no questions and there's no public comment, you could simply make your motion by reading the recommendation and asking that it be moved.
Okay, can I read the recommendation in the agenda, or do I need to read the?
On the staff report.
I guess I have to read this one because the other one is just one sentence. It says, "Adopt the resolution." So.
On the staff report.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm.
No, seriously. I've only got... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Okay. All right, so I will move that we adopt the resolution approving a 5% performance incentive payment, an amended and restated employment agreement with city manager Cyrus Abhar, increasing his annual salary by 5% to $258,152.33, and that the city manager's salary schedule be adopted, and that we adopt a resolution approving the amended full-time employee salary schedule.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Stacy, call the, call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Thank you very much. So we can ask the city manager to return and congratulate him. Okay, Stacy, so 12.1, the 2019 city council meeting schedule. Do you actually want, do you want us to adopt the schedule tonight or simply review it and come back at a later date and adopt it?
If you are in a position to adopt it tonight, it would be great if we could adopt it, but if we, if you need time to consult your calendars, we can certainly come back at the next meeting.
Okay, colleagues.
I would say let's just adopt it, and if we end up having changes, that we'll make those as they come about. Yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and pass the thing. I think you've sent me.
18 million.
Yeah, 25,000 emails. I've, I've waited to accept them until we've actually voted and I can actually look at my calendar, but I would say I'm happy to, to make a motion to adopt.
I think.
I'm second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, do we have any council requests for future agenda items?
No.
Okay. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we assume that by the time people will have seen this, everyone will have voted. And I just want to mention, in case you all didn't notice, that one of the young ladies from PAL had her "I voted" sticker on. She's 18, and she voted, and this is so cool. One of the young ladies from PAL, she had her "I voted" sticker on. So she's a brand-new young voter. This is her very first election. So we want to adjourn this meeting tonight in honor of Laureen and Ernie Ernest Conrad, former residents of the Walnutwood area. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you and good night.